Board of Education Regime Meeting, June 15, 2021, 6:15 PM, Wallace's office building, Block 1. We call everyone's here except for Sonia, hardly to zoom in. Board member comments?
Do we need to approve the agenda first?
I mean, I'm sorry, yes. Most approve agenda.
I will, so I'm ready to approve it.
All right, I'll second. All favor see if I say an aye.
Aye.
All right, board member comments?
All right, I have a couple of things, and I'll try to be brief. Do we have a date for Ready Fest? Yes?
I was gonna say we do, but I can't.
August 12th.
Yeah, August 12th. Okay. I'm gonna grab my calendar.
Thank you, Sonia.
Um, can we just spend five minutes on preschool? So, um, what, how many days a week do they go? Five days?
No, did you want me?
Either.
So, you have to provide two and a half hours, four days per week, as the minimum. But this year for COVID, we've designed the two full days a week, which is equal to or actually more than the two and a half hours. We also found that to be less intrusive, so we have applied with KDE to continue that, two days per week, two full days per week. Having 60 kids leave and 60 kids arrive on a bus at the same time, giving 120 kids, four-year-olds, three-year-olds run around trying to, you know, get them out, get them in, get them out, get them in. It really eats up a lot of the time of the day. So, it's two full days a week, every week. And then on Fridays, they do like home visits and screenings and things like that with parents, trainings.
Do they ride a regular bus, or is there a separate bus?
They ride on, the preschool and special needs ride together on one bus.
Preschool and bus. The reason I ask, I saw Kenton County is gonna do five days a week of preschool, so I thought that was interesting. I wasn't sure what limited. Okay. And the last thing, since we put off the superintendent evaluation, I wondered if everyone would check their calendar for 6:28, 6:29, or 6:30, so we can finalize that by the end of the month. And you can just let us know. Is that, that's okay with you, Mr. Hammond?
Okay. Whichever day works.
I think that's Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, not next week, but the week after. That's all, thank you.
Only thing I have is, I just wanna give compliments to the nice ad in the paper, way to sell it. I know, I think Claire said we haven't had any hits yet, but hey, you know what, we are selling it, so that's drivers needed. So, kudos to whoever did that, but it looks good.
Mr. Davis?
Hi, Ms. Becky. No, I'll reserve comment. Becky, I'm good on any of those dates.
Beautiful.
Stand the school reports, the superintendent principal, the ministry reports.
Okay, I'll, and I'll just summarize all the reports. Of course, they're all in one group this time, and I think they're more or less two points. Some of them may have expanded and grown a little, but something that, for the positive end, focusing primarily on summer school, and then something that felt like, that we felt like we could be working on, and that's from each school level. And of course, what I put in was in reference to summer school as well, and some of the points that I felt beneficial in what we're looking at to go forward. And then the one thing that I emphasized that we probably need to continue to revisit or evaluate would be salaries as we go forward. And thanks, Amanda, for the comment on that. And of course, I'll give you a compliment of this with your suggestion, your idea, and with this, given the custodial need, we probably need to do the same thing for custodians in hopes that it might attract someone and enter. But all of the reports are included in that, one group.
That's it?
Yes.
That's all. Any else? All right. So, these, uh, agenda minutes. All right, chance to go over them. All right, human resource actions, everybody go over them. Everybody had a chance to look over consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve.
You need a motion to address, or are you?
Yeah.
I move to approve that consent agenda.
All right. Second. All favor see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Recommend action in business. All right, we approve MOA for Mental Behavior and Health Services, Holly Hill and Family Solutions.
Can we make a correction on your consent items? E is boys' football scrimmage, it's not boys' basketball.
It says football.
Football.
Yes. First, Mr. Chairman, for the board.
Go ahead.
Uh, break through that motion with that correction.
Well, just a second, was it, did y'all submit a request, an actual written request? Or was this it?
Yes.
Was the request form right?
Yes. The request form was correct.
Okay. Okay. So, you can proceed, Argus. Technically, I don't want you to have to. The request form is right, it was just a typo on the agenda, but, you know, if anybody looked at the attachments, the attachment would've been right. But...
Okay.
All right, you approve MOA for Mental Health, Behavior, Health Services, Holly Hill and Family Solutions.
Okay, of course, we've got, uh, do we have another item on there? Did we, did we have two of them? We've got all that grouped together.
So, does that, the Sunbelt?
No, with Holly Hill, of course. I, Mr. Breitlinger, special guest speaker, of course, for reference, Becky should participate in part of that conversation, but I thought, maybe we inadvertently deleted one of them.
Yeah, we did, there was two of them.
Um, do we still have the other one on there someplace?
Why would he have two?
It's, um, it was two different, and Mr. Breitlinger...
Yeah, so one was for, just for the therapists to come in and do school-based therapy, and the other one was for the day treatment program. So, there were two different.
And the day treatment program is what Ms. Becky participated in the conversation?
That is correct. That's correct.
What is the cost of it?
The cost on that for the district will likely just be, well, I'll rephrase that, will be an instructional assistant to assist the representative from Holly Hill during the day and what we were looking at, and Mr. Breitlinger and Ms. Burgett, you can help me out with this, on the day treatment, we were looking at two different day treatment settings, and we were looking at somewhere between, uh, four to eight students?
Per group.
Per group. And that would be one instructional assistant per group, and they will assist the counselor or the provider, and then they will also serve to assist the kids as they go back to class, deliver them back to class. And we were looking at the main portion of the day, addressing the mental issues, the social issues with these students, and the greatest need, and Mr. Breitlinger, you can go on with that and just may, but then afterwards, we were looking at, after this service was provided, we felt like it was first and foremost that there would be that many kids, and then optimistically, they could go back to the class and be productive, and this effort would not only be productive for the students that were in attendance, but would also enhance the opportunities in the classroom for those from distractions of kids with challenges that they cannot do very well COVID with. But that'd be my version.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So Medicaid is primarily paying for it?
Yes. To get that, Hargis Medicaid would be paying for the Holly Hill vote.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna move to approve.
A second.
Is that both of them? They're both with Holly Hill?
What, can we do both without it being on the agenda?
Well, they were both with Holly Hill, I didn't even know there really was.
Sunbelt's on here, on the agenda.
Sunbelts are different.
Yeah, but they're different. I didn't, you know, I guess that was most, I didn't know there was two different agenda
items, but there were two, I looked at two different contracts with Holly Hill.
And before this last, we gotta, gotta switch. The last revision, we got a MOA with Holly Hill and Family Solutions for Day Treatment, which is what Ms. Burgett participated in the conversation with, and then the MOA with Mental Health and Mental slash Behavioral Health with Holly Hill and Family Solutions, and that was just for the, if you wanna call it, the normal counseling services.
Correct.
I'm fine with approving both, that we can...
Yeah, I mean, both with Holly Hill, I think you can do them under the same agenda. I didn't know the verbal was to, so you can do it under the same agenda.
All right, make your move. Just made a second. All favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh. All right, view approved single fuel bill from Southern Patrol at 17 cents above daily rack average for both number two diesel and regular gasoline for 2021, 2022.
Okay, receive one...
What was the cost last year? Do we know that all?
Yeah, what was the cost last year?
It was 15 cents over rack last year, so this year it's 17 cents.
He didn't hear a second, he never got a second. I don't think so.
Second. Made a second, all favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh. You approve single propane bid for ferro gas LP for 2021, 2022 at $1.54.549 per gallon.
Mr. I so approve.
I'll second.
Second, all favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh. All right, view approved single bid from Leonard Lewis for snow removal for 2021, 2022, backhoe and 12.
Mr. I so approve.
All right, move. I'll second. Any discussion? Favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
You approve bid for Sir Plus Bus 0422, single bid receipt from Cozy Auto Repair and towing for $1,800.
Move to approve.
Second, make your move, second. All favor, see if I say an aye.
Um, I don't know much, Chairman. Discussion on that?
Aye, go ahead.
The way that bid was put in, the way that the bid was put in on that, I believe if he takes the one bus, the Ford's bus, and correctly if I'm wrong with this, Mr. Chairman, if he takes the Ford bus, and he'll cut that a little bit up at no cost to the district, so it's no cost to us, but that bus needs to be, the motor needs to be drilled, the frame cut off-site, so they get pictures of it, just say that, true as I create, Mr. Hammond?
That is correct. And what you had said about the cost, it is a wash. The next item is a proposal to charge $1,800 to do just what you referenced.
Right, but the, uh, we'll need to do those two together, won't we?
Well, you don't have to. I mean, it's two separate agenda items. Well, we can do them separately. I mean, if it's on paper, he's gonna be paying 1,500 for one bus, getting 1,500 for the other bus, but it's acceptable. Eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim.
All favor. Make your move, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Uh, M, you approve proposed meets requirements of the VW grant to include cutting the frame, drilling holes in engine block and taking photos, plus 2018, single bid receipt from Cozy Auto Repair and towing for 1,800.
Move to approve.
Second, all favor, any discussion? All favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh. You approve contact for Interstate Maintenance for Custodial Services at the upper elementary and middle school.
I actually have a couple things in that. So, what's gonna cost $15,000 a month? Is that you or Michelle?
Yes, and in that, it is, it is $15,000 a month, and we had, I'm looking for the contract there, but anyway, I'll summarize it. We met with Kelly, and actually met with Chubb, and talked about it, this, this item, and Kelly said, since we're having, you know, he was in favor of this, it's basically the same cost. When you, when you look at it, and Michelle, you can chime in on this for my comment, but, and it's not to do away with anyone's job. The basis for it is, we cannot find custodial. And actually, we've got another, do we still have one vacancy at the lower with this retirement?
We do. So, we had a lot of retirements this year, and then we had a couple reassignments, so what happened is, it left the evening positions at that entire building open, so the upper and the middle. And so, we have four currently that's in the site based allocations, and I asked Kelly to give me the payroll information. So, what we're paying right now on average, so it's not those four particular people that just left, it would just be, on average, we're paying over $12,000 a month for four. And one concern that Kelly had brought to my attention is for the classified retirement system, the percentage that the districts has to pay into their retirement has increased significantly, and the outlook is, that's going to keep increasing every year. So, when you look at the salary schedule, it's really not reflective of what it costs the district because of the retirement percentage and their insurance and things like that. So, we had that information, it was over $12,000 a month, and then, you know, we're buying all of those cleaning supplies, or everything that we're buying that...
The schools buying?
The schools buying that right now. So, in addition to $12,000 a month, we're paying anywhere from five to seven a year in cleaning supplies. And then we have all of our equipment that we have to maintain, like we have the floor scrubbers, you know, you have to buy carts, you have to buy all these things. So, that $15,000 is going to include all of the cleaning supplies. We will not be purchasing those anymore, except for the day shift users. And so, what that company has also offered us is, right now, we use Kenway and Bowman as our custodial service supplies, and we just kinda go with whoever's the cheapest, like whoever has garbage bags the cheapest, whoever has Clorox the cheapest, we use those too. This company also works with, it's called the Home Depot Custodial Services Outlet, so their offer, they can, like, they power buy because it's surplus, I mean, it's a warehouse, and they have this huge company. This is the company that Dorman uses, and that's how I found them, is I reached out to some local places and said, who do you use? So, they would be able to, so the things that we would still be responsible for buying, like the toilet paper and the garbage bags and any cleaning supply during the day, we would be able to get their prices, was significantly lower than what we're paying right now. And we, and we've had a lot of trouble filling those positions. When we had them open through the years, I mean, it takes months to get anyone, and we don't have any subs, so that is just putting all of that double work on the custodians that we have. And, and the best thing about it, no one is losing their job. We met with the custodians, met with all the principals, and talked about that. We have one that was on nights, and she went to day shift at the upper and middle, so no one is losing anything, and the also great thing about this company is, they'll work with our other custodians and train them. That's all part of that, that cost.
So, this is upper and middle only?
Yes.
So, night, night shift? We don't have anyone working nights at that building, other than this company, if we were to go over?
Yes, yes.
And, and with this, you know, again, looking at this and...
I know, I was getting ready to say, we have an advertising.
And advertising, look, look into the future, given where we are and the challenges we've had with filling those vacancies. Of course, had a conversation with Hargis today, and the promotion would be that if you went this route and you approved this, that we would be, we would be looking at this for one year.
Yes.
And we really need to, again, my, my point with my comments on the board report, is that we really need to look at salaries. I think we really need to evaluate the salary schedule a little bit raw, and that we seriously look at the custodial salary along with the rest, and see if we can do something to enhance that, because if we had local people that could fill this bill, that would work here, I think it would behoove us because of many aspects to do that. So, looking one year down the road, we would be revisiting this and hopefully be able to get some answers.
Was the staff for this? Because I'm all about keeping local jobs and keeping people locally.
Yes, absolutely. I am also, and whenever we did have a position, like, we did put in the paper, we had it on our Facebook, we're sharing, those custodians were sharing, and we just didn't have the applicants. And when the principals would call someone, I mean, honestly, we got no thing.
So, we still, we still advertise for subs.
Absolutely.
Possibly doing a full-time position for the following year because a lot of it probably is due to the unemployment and the extra pay.
Yes. That is a factor. It, it is. And, and we've really tried to fill down a couple of the custodians, have reached out to people, you know, hey, come and work for us, and we just can't get the applicants. The sub custodian is always posted. We haven't had anyone apply for that job since last year for a sub custodian. I don't want our buildings, I don't want our buildings not to be cleaned. And another thing about this company, they did come in and do a site survey, they looked at our buildings, and, you know, great condition, that's, that's why we got the price we got. I reached out to Jamie, I've talked to him three or four times, and he could not be happier with them. He used a local company, and then he had this company and another one bid it. I talked to all three of those companies that he used, even the local one, and, and one of the concerns is, the local company couldn't fill those positions. So, the company that Interstate Maintenance, they don't hire full-time. They do part-time people, so they don't have to pay the retirement or the benefits, and so that's why they're able to offer that price. And another good thing I like about them, and he's like, we are in and out. He goes, we don't worry about filling eight hours like you would have to with your full-time. He's like, we have a schedule, we know what to do, we get in there, we get it done. If we have an event like a basketball game, they adjust their hours to stay there and clean up after that, that's part of the cost. That's not anything extra.
And they're reliable, it's not like that Kelly services.
Yeah, Jamie, I actually got an email from Jamie today, and I shared it with you, and he said he has never went without service. Because that was one of my things, like, how can they fill and we can't? You know, they're filling not the full times, they have a lot of people like part-time, he told me they use college students, they just use people looking for part-time work. And he, and Jamie, that was my biggest question to him, have you ever went without the factory being cleaned? And he said, never. They have not. And great communication, anything we've needed, they have reached out and done whatever they needed to do.
And again, I agree, if we can do something to make this more attractive through salary, I think we ought to. I think everyone in here would be agreeing that we would rather have local work.
Yeah.
Today, as a side note, others heard, Ms. Connie from Laurel Elementary came in to fill out her paperwork, you know, she's, you know, Connie, and she's been here for several years, retired from Dorman's, I think, and she was telling us how she came to leave, and why she was leaving, and how she loved kids, and I told her that I wanted her to be our guest speaker, and I really mean it, I want her, I would like her to come and talk to you, and, but not just you, you know, share this, because it was a wonderful conversation that she had about loving kids, loving the community, loving the school itself, and she had to do this during the summer because she couldn't work during the year, and then, seriously, with new employees, not just custodians, but teachers, what she's had to say should touch anyone. So, she said that she would come back and be of assistance as a guest speaker, so I'm gonna hit her up.
Well, I'll move to approve the contract for one year.
Second.
I just got one question.
Go ahead.
You made a comment there, made a go, that you talked to SBD and allocations and things. How much money can we allocate to those school, to schools for that?
I, I can't... I can't, that is a question for Kelly. I just asked him how many positions we had allocated, and then how much on average those positions would cost. So, I, I do not know exactly what he has allocated, he just gave me an average cost.
Thanks.
Do you have a second, or do you need a second?
Need a second.
I'll second.
Just made a move, move. Second. All favor, any further discussion? All right, all favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Argus, you voted in favor of that?
Yes, sir.
All right, four oh. All right. Each, you approve proposed 2021, 2022 insurance package.
Okay, I think you've got an attachment on that, and I'll just go, go with the price. It's gone up a little less than $1,000, same coverage, and we're looking at 286.777 versus 287.758, which is, in my opinion, pretty impressive in today's market. Same company, Liberty Mutual.
Mr. Motion.
Move is on second, any further discussion?
Just wondering, that's for our employees?
That covers, that covers everything, Liberty Mutual's for property and general liability, and I covered workers' comp, and you'll pay additional for student accident insurance, which is probably certainly worth it, you know, for that a few years ago, but it covers all three.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Laurel. All right, discussion actions, ban critical race theory in Galton County School District.
Hi, just to have it put on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and move forward that the ban CRT in our school districts. It is very divisive, it is, there's legislation that has already been introduced to ban statewide, and I'd like to wait and do it in a district.
You recommend a motion, tell what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, motion, need a second?
A second.
I'd, in fact, clarify, Mr. Davis, during this discussion here, what, you know, do you have any more specifics? I mean, you're just saying critical race theory, I mean, that's what you want to ban? I mean, is there a specific curriculum that's being taught here or something? Or you just wanna put, you know, critical race theory in?
Just, uh, critical race theory across the board, Jake. Like I said, there's legislation that's been introduced, and legislation that will pass the, uh...
I'm aware it's been prefiled.
And you're also aware of what it is? I don't wanna get into big discuss on tonight, I know we're in a closed session and things, but anybody that's, if they've studied it, they've watched it, they've watched it across these states, and abandoned it in, Florida just passed the other day the ban here in Florida, it's, for me, I'll just say it's one of the dumbest things that I've ever heard, on the teaching and things of it. It's, uh, no child, every child should be equal in all children's eyes, a child should not have to, well, I just think anybody get into this, my motion on the floor, begging...
Fair enough.
And, uh, I'm just not gonna get into it tonight.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all favor, see if I say an aye.
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 Four oh. All right. Approval to enter into closed sess, closed executive session in the quarters for KRS 61.810. For discretion of hearings, which might lead to the discipline, dismissal, or expulsion of downtown students in a discussion or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual or student. Member or student without restricting that employee's member or student's rights to a public hearing requested. Make the motion?
Second.
Second. All favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
Four oh.
I'm going to move that we exit executive session.
All right, I'll second, all favor.
Addict 16.
Addict 16, all favor, see if I say an aye.
Aye.
All right, motion to take action in closed session discussion. We just did that.
Yeah, we're just, no, just making, making a motion to adopt. Yeah, we'll just, no, just make a, make a motion to adopt the recommendations made in executive session.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Not adopt the first.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations in closed session.
We don't have to name a student, oh, oh, one, oh, oh.
You don't have to, anymore, you don't have to name them in closed session.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I already moved. You can second.
You can.
All favor, six, five, say a nine.
Aye.
Yes, yes. Four oh. Motion, Jerry.
I'll say move.
I'll second. All right, whatever. I was, you know, I just went spread the last. Yeah, me too. Of course, I want to.
That's good.
Get hard.
That's why, another reason why.
Get hard to object to that move.
Yeah, I know. It's the same thing. I like.
Like, oh, Lord, we're going to be there all midnight.
Thank you, Hargis.